Stand for the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to do a roll call.
Mayor Hassler.
Here.
Alderman Grimmonter.
Here.
Alderman Mooney.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Hook.
Here.
Alderman Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Ruzika.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. I'll look over the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. We'll go down to our city administrators' report. You ready, Mark?
I am ready.
Good.
What would you have done if I said no?
Well, we'd have just run on by you. We left you out.
We had some guys in from Union Pacific because of some complaints and letters and I misspelled failure. The residents on South Gabery are concerned about that slope failure and how it was fixed and whether it's gonna stay there. They complained about the high weeds and grasses around in the track right of way. Alderman Donovan's got some questions on 10th Street Crossing. We've got just kind of a handful of things and they agreed to come down and talk about them. And so they sent the track maintenance supervisor down and two other guys and we talked about them. And they spent the day surveying the system and he came back and said, "We didn't find any structural deficiencies. We have a lot of cosmetic problems and maintenance issues that we need to take care of." And I agreed. And they said that they were gonna start tending to them. It was the one that was obvious to everybody is just lack of mowing and maintaining the track right of way. You've all heard me talk and some have had personal experiences with a railroad and so I'm gonna let that experience and my prior comments stand. I'd love to see them do the things that they say they're gonna do.
Bring up the drainpipe again, up a little rock?
Yes. And he said, "That's under Burlington Northern right of way. We'll cooperate with you, we'll coordinate with you, but you gotta get Burlington Northern to step up on that." And as you know how successful I've been with that.
So, we as a city have methods of forcing homeowners into taking care of their properties and things like that? Do we have the same leeway with these businesses like this?
Well, with a homeowner, and I'm gonna ask Mark to kinda consider this in commenting, with a homeowner, we can order them to comply with the ordinance. If they fail to comply with the ordinance, we can give them a citation and they come to court and they sit before the judge and the judge decides whether or not they should be fined. If it rises to the level of a public nuisance, we can arrange for the work to be done ourselves and the cost of that is payable by them or can become a special tax lien. I don't know how to hack at the railroad in front of a municipal court judge.
You have limited authority to be able to deal with it. I don't know the nature of the problems, but you have limited authority to deal with the railroad right of way. So you have limited jurisdiction with regard to the railroad tracks running through town. How do you control the speeds they go? We're not the regulatory authority for the railroad.
Department of Transportation is that way.
Right.
And we've gone that route. I mean, before, we called Jeff City and said, "Could you make him do something?" And he said, "We'll talk to him." 10th Street Crossing hasn't been fixed yet.
So how do we enforce that on any homeowner then?
We give him a citation. We write him a ticket.
I know, but I didn't hear Mark's comment.
Yeah, I mean, the homeowners, they have a statutory authority. I mean, the legislators empowered us specifically to deal with those kind of nuisance issues. I mean, first step to space, you know, cut your grass or whatever the case may be. And if they don't comply with that, you can either, you know, a couple different routes. One would be to cite them in municipal court. And sometimes you do that as well as providing them with notice you're gonna come onto the property and cut the grass for them. And then you do that and you file, as I said, like a tax lien upon the real estate for that bill that it'd be expensive of cleaning that. So that's generally how you end up solving those issues.
So what exempts the railroad?
They're not a residence and they are not regulated by the city of St. Genevieve. We don't have the authority to regulate the railroad right of ways that are going through our town. Like we do have the authority to regulate other properties. We have limited jurisdiction.
So like a regular business, let's say if I owned a restaurant and I let the grass grow crazy at my restaurant, then the city could say, "You gotta fix this." But not the railroad.
That's my understanding.
Because they're special.
They're real special.
They are a far-profit business.
That's the kindest word I could think to say. Wish I was special.
You are.
Just not that much.
Just a little bit.
I think Mr. Tillman's going about it exactly the way you have to go about it when we bring him down here. The city of DeSoto has a large facility between Pacific and, they've always been very good with the city of DeSoto. But that's a more larger comp, I guess.
Well, different relationship.
Yeah, well, they need our cooperation with different things too, with building, expansion, cooperation.
Have you tried giving them a peace offering?
Well, I never meaned anybody, well, I'm not often meaned anybody. So we talked about the trash pump and the price is such that I had to advertise for bids, even though I have the bids, to see if there's anybody out there who wants to weigh in. And so on September the 5th, the time will collapse and I can place the order. In that process, however, and several conversations with vendors, they suggested the one that was recommended to me was we would not be satisfied with it. And so what I've advertised is for a pump that is within five years old, a used pump that's sturdier. And they say, "Look, they're all, you know, it's a thousand gallons and they tell you they're self-priming, but they're not self-priming in a thousand gallons a minute." And they have this, you know, the horsepower, but it won't last a year with the materials they may have. So I'm gonna propose the purchase of the best price of the sturdier pump and buy a warranty. And so we get the same coverage for the period of time we get something that's better suited for our needs.
Is that for down there?
Well, it can be used for, the thing we're buying it for is when Gary's pipe on North Creek shuts because the water comes up and the water begins to build up on the levee, you know, the inside of, the dry side of the levee, it'll be used to pump that down.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
But it's on a trailer, so we can, it's portable, so we can move it to wherever we need to use it. Steve could use it to pump down manhole, clog manhole sewer line or whatever. Sent the contract to Jokers for the paving work. I had sent out an email suggesting that since their bid came in lower than we had expected, we might be able to spend money for additional roadwork. Consulted with the mayor, I think he's right, that we, there's some provision in our contract that allows us to add work, but you can't double the amount of work without bidding it out again. And then adding work would be for small additions, you know, could you fix that person's driveway or something like that? We can't just spend another $40,000 without bidding it out. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna take that money that's in this year's budget and we're gonna go ahead and put it in the infrastructure improvements under the street department. And as we, it becomes clear to us what's going on with the Corps of Engineers and we decide in the next month or so how we wanna spend the money. If we say that we decided to do Chadwell Lane, we know we gotta get engineering now, we could go ahead and get that work done in anticipation of doing it in the spring. The Senator Blunt had a legislative director who was enamored with St. Genevieve, was working really hard to get legislation for the National Park Service through the Senate. She went to work for another governmental agency and so it wasn't a lot happening while she was gone from the senator staff and he hadn't replaced her yet. He did replace her. Trey McKenzie is the name of the guy. He came to town, the newspaper reported on it, if you read that. I think he, kind of like most people do, he said, "This is great." And went back with new vigor to get the Senate bill through. Of course, the Senate bill's not gonna be the hard part. The hard part's gonna be in the House. They led us to believe, and Sandra, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that they think they're making some progress in the House Committee, the chairman of which is kind of against the new parks. So they weren't specific, they didn't give any timelines, but they left me with the sense that it's starting to make some progress that we hadn't seen before. Is that fair?
I would say so, yeah.
So after our last meeting, we went back to the company that we had proposed to buy the new Canine from and said, "We'd really like for you to put this language in about loser pays on legal fees." And he said, "No, I'm not gonna do that. If that's what you want me to do, don't buy the dog from me." So we said, "Okay." So we went to this FM Canine, which is in Michigan, which was one of the proposals that we had. Turns out, we can buy a dog from them, same training, for about $1,000 less than it was gonna cost us to go to the guy here. And with a company that has a good reputation, doesn't have illegal problems that Mark envisioned with a company that's doing business in Missouri but hasn't registered with the Secretary of State, and he was more than amenable to the language that Mark recommended. So Mark reviewed the contract, I've sent it off to him. I think he's, we're ready to go. Any questions? Thanks.
Steve, you're up.
Let's see. You see on the top of my report that High Service Pump 2 has been down for some time. It was the contactors in the master control center. It's a big electrical panel inside the water plant. There are NEMA 5 contacts inside that panel. They're very heavy duty. That panel pulls about 1,100 to 1,200 amps when that motor starts. So we were having trouble finding a heavy-duty enough starter to get it going. Since the report was written, we have found a starter and it's been installed. So High Service Pump is back up and running at the water treatment plant. We have plans to install a flush hydrant, hopefully next week over here on South 5th Street. It's a dead-in-line, there's been no real way of getting it flushed until this point, so.
Do you know how many dead-in-lines do we have? You have a resume?
Maybe a half a dozen total.
This one was a particular problem. It's the material of the pipe. This guy was getting rust out of the faucet the longer it ran, which is unusual because it's normally the other way around. And that's because of the, it was starting to, as he ran a lot of water, he was starting to pull down some of the rust that was in the line, so.
It was almost enough to clean the pipe, but not enough, so.
So we'll be able to take care of that until we can get that pipe replaced with PVC.
There's no way to loop those dead-in-lines that we have now?
That one, not on that one, no.
Well, yes.
There is.
But.
Without, I mean, we'd have to cross the railroad tracks and everything.
Under the green.
Yeah.
Flush hydrant is quite a bit smaller and narrower than.
It's got the same two-and-a-half inch nozzle as a large hydrant, there's just one instead of a pumper and two smart ones.
There's not anything that say that our pumper went down there and needed more water, they couldn't hook to that, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they can hook it.
Okay, so I was curious.
Yeah, it's a two-and-a-half inch.
Mr. Redner?
Yeah.
Okay.
So a little work coming up here. Have you heard on the risers?
They'll be in by September 1st.
Thank you.
Water and sewer. All right, questions?
How do you know how big a riser is?
You have to go measure each one.
We know we're putting two-and-a-half inches of asphalt, so.
Start there, yeah.
He's measured what he needs to get up two-and-a-half inches.
Yeah, each frame and lid is a different size from the next depending on manufacturer. And there might only be a half-inch difference in the diameter, but each one has to be custom-made.
Oh, wow.
Thanks.
Thanks, Steve. Sandra?
So, before Sandra begins and without giving a too-big ahead, does anyone other than me have anything nice to say about the way the eclipse crowds and arrangements were handled? Because I think the city, her staff, Gary, the police department, I think everybody just did a remarkable job.
It was a class operation all the way around.
I thought the music festival was fantastic and I heard from so many people around town how they enjoyed it, they wanna do it more often. It was a great thing to have everybody come out and just have a good time together. Yeah, I was very welcome.
I agree. Well done.
That stage was impressive. It was a nice stage.
Well, thank you. It took a lot of teamwork to make that happen and those are part of my remarks tonight. But I was talking to Alderman Hook on the way in tonight and he complimented me, or, you know, really the whole effort. And I said, "You know, it took a lot of belief in our community and in our volunteers and in our civic organizations and my staff and our teamwork with the police and fire and EMS. A lot of belief that we could pull together and make this happen and everybody really stepped up. And I appreciate everyone's efforts in digging deep when they had to dig deep and give everything that they had. We had some long days. And when this insert came out in the post dispatch on the Sunday before the eclipse, it was called Your Guide to the Eclipse. And, you know, months before that, we had to commit to a small ad and we sent them our information and our phone on Sunday started ringing off the hook in the welcome center to the point where by Wednesday of that week, I had to have two people in the office, just in the front, so that I could get anything done in the back office. By Friday, we had all four of us on the phones, answering people as they were coming in because a lot of those eclipse people were coming in. Some even came in the weekend before to kind of check out the lay of the land, make sure they knew where the parking facility was, make sure they knew where the community center was, make sure they liked the lay of the, you know, the soccer fields, everything. So it was like, it was like a ground swell, just like momentum that was building all week long. And by the end of the week, like Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then of course on Monday, it was just go, 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 go. Well, Sunday, the music festival and Dick and Kenny Grimmonter and Dwayne Dunsey were my partners in crime on that in particular. And just from that point on, it was just non-stop. And then, you know, I kept saying, "I'll do that after the eclipse, I'll do that after the eclipse, I'll do that." And everybody's like, "Are you gonna take some time off?" I'm like, "No, I got too much to do after the eclipse, are you kidding?" So in substitute for my tourism report, you have in front of you one example of many wonderful things that people shared with us, both in person and by email and on our social media after the event. This happens to be a professional from the Chicago area. She's a consultant and she just wanted to say, "We enjoyed our time in St. Genevieve. Your town was beautiful, your logistics were excellent, it was really fun to share this eclipse experience with a few thousand strangers. Since the event was free, we tried to plow our money back into your local economy." And she goes on to talk about that. And this was really just one example. If you're, I'm sure mostly Alderman, I hope, have been following our social media presence on this, but in addition to the Visit St. Jen Facebook page and Twitter feed, the St. Genevieve spelled out, the St. Genevieve abbreviated and the Solar Eclipse dedicated Facebook page, if you scroll through it this whole week, it's just been one person after another. I mean, it almost like, you know, like I can't sleep at night anyway because I've been so keyed up about this. But to read through it and to scroll through it, I mean, it almost makes me choke up. So I just wanted to thank everyone for, you know, their support when it came down to it. Fowler Bus Lines was incredible, working with SMTS, we hired the trolley for two days just to cycle around through the downtown and bring people like who were camping at campsites downtown for the music festival. And on Monday, we thought maybe people would like to come downtown instead of get on, you know, gridlock traffic headed back to St. Louis and we had quite a few people take advantage of that. So they did an excellent job. I need to thank our sponsors. St. Genevieve County Memorial Hospital, Wholesome, Kem Lime, the Wast, Eric Scott, Mississippi Lime, Citizens Electric, Siros, the Anvil, the Old Brick, the Sandbar, the St. Genevieve Muni Band Grant, the St. Genevieve County Community Center, the Community Services Forum of St. Genevieve County, my great co-chair Dick Grimmonter, Kenny Grimmonter and Dwayne Dunsey, our street department who were incredible through the whole thing, our police department who helped keep us safe and kept that traffic managed. And I think, you know, in the first place, having those off-site parking areas and bringing everybody to the event for the most part on shuttles except for the handicap really helped minimize that traffic impact. And I was really nervous about traffic. I'm sure Eric and Jason and everybody were too and it seemed that it wasn't as bad as what we were thinking. The ambulance department did a great job. It was hot out there that day. And by, you know, by 1:00 in the afternoon, I mean, everybody had been there since 7:30 in the morning. One of my volunteers said, "You know, this is like the category of it's melting me out here." And I was like, "You're right, it's like melting hot out here." And the ambulance, I mean, they had several people that they had to attend to and most of them, they were able to put them into the county's first aid trailer. It's like a long trailer and they have it air-conditioned inside, so they were able to cool those people down and give them some fluids. And they were fine. One person, they did have to transport to the hospital, it was an elderly person. And then members of the St. Genevieve Rotary, I had gone and made presentations to that organization a couple of times and they came through with quite a few volunteers, I really appreciated that. Boy Scout Troop 150, they were great. They came with some Boy Scouts on, what was that, Thursday night and then Saturday morning and then one of them even came back to help us park cars on Monday, so they were really good. Our event volunteers, the food and beverage vendors, Fowler Bus Lines, which I've already mentioned, First Baptist Church, the Valley Desert, the Elks Lodge, and Eric Scott, National Vinyl and Sabreliner for all allowing us to use their parking lots at no charge. We didn't charge anyone for their parking spaces or their viewing spaces, but we did all of it online. And what you're seeing there at the bottom of your email from this person in Chicago that emailed us back, that's the email that went out to all of them. She was kind of a late registration, so hers went out later in the week, but basically it said, "We're excited that you're gonna be coming here for the celebration on the center line. We're looking forward to your time here. Here's some tidbits for all the things you can do while you're in St. Genevieve." And then it went on with their logistics for how to get to your parking lot, how to get to your shuttle, how to check in at the event. And I had a lot of great people helping me with that and so I think it went as well as we could. I think I also learned some lessons from it and we're gonna record that because guess what? We're on the center line, we're not, we're in the path of totality again in 2024 for another eclipse. So whether it's me or someone else, I'll have notes for them for what to do and how to do it and what not to do. And by any, by all means, if there's anyone who has suggestions. We tried to, you know, there were challenges that came up along the way and we tried to deal with those as best we could and address them and move on.
Do you know the date?
Pardon me?
You know the date, seven years from now?
It's in April, so it's gonna be the opposite.
That would've been my suggestion, move it to April.
Yeah.
2/8.
It's in April, so the weather could be anything in April, you know?
Yeah.
We got really lucky, so.
You got your notes in there?
Fortunate, I should say.
So I have an item for discussion and I'm gonna take the opportunity of you being up there to discuss it. Five years ago, we had bought a tent from Perryville and we had wind gusts and it damaged the tent, so we couldn't get it back to them. So we bought a tent and returned it to them. And then we had the tent. We'd never had a tent. And we started providing it as a service to nonprofit organizations that are established in the community. No weddings, no, you know, still has the Lions Club and the Bull Duke and we probably put it up over the years six times a year, I think that's it.
More than that. We got eight more times yet this year to put it up.
It's worn out. Gary's putting it up with duct tape and clothespins. We never charged for its use. We never, and now we have Ace Hardware in town that makes the rents tents for events. Question is, should we replace it at the cost of $3,000 to $4,000? Should we get out of the business and ground out of the business? Or is this a service I think we should continue to provide?
What's the cost to that?
I haven't checked a little register.
How much does that attract from our people as far as getting other work done?
Well, it's time-consuming.
It's the whole crew, three to four hours per setup, tear down.
Total three, four hours for both setup and tear down?
Yeah, total.
Yeah.
Think about it, if we're going, if we're finishing our budget, you can sign it later.
I think it's a good public relations thing for us to do. I've always, and I think we have the time with the city man hours to put it up and I just think it's a good thing to do.
I agree.
You do too?
You don't mind, do you, Gary?
So I'm gonna adjust Gary's budget a little bit to.
What's the liability issues on that? Is that assumed by the people's property that we're putting it on? Does the city have liability for that if it were to fall down and injure somebody? What, does the homeowner, does the business owner that's borrowing the tent from us, do they assume that liability or is that on us for putting it up?
We're liable for negligence.
How would I imagine it's on us? I would think it would come out of the city's insurance policy.
We're not generally liable. Because we put it up doesn't mean they have a winnable claim against us.
Make them sign a waiver.
That's a piece of evidence for him to go to court with. Anyway, it's a good thing to do. All right, thanks for your direction. Take care of it.
Sandra?
Go ahead, Bob.
You had the little time lapse thing out at the community center over the soccer fields and all the people.
Yeah.
Who did that?
They were recording that from the roof. We also had a drone flying over, so they just gave me a USB drive today with the drone photography on it and you haven't even had a chance to look at it. There's also, if you look at the St. Genevieve Solar Eclipse 2017 Facebook page, there's a really nice little clip that, oh, I didn't even mention that, Channel 5 in St. Louis. So we had channel, we had network coverage in St. Louis on Channel 2, 4 and 5 and the public TV channel in St. Louis. We had two radio stations here covering it live and we have the TV channel from Cape Girardeau that put two broadcasts out about St. Genevieve. You can't pay, I mean, we could not afford to pay for that kind of coverage.
That video, that spot's really good.
It is really nice. So if you get a chance to tonight, go to the. So if you get a chance to tonight, go to the St. Genevieve Solar Eclipse 2017 Facebook page and just watch that Channel 5. It really did a nice job, and it kind of covers the human side of it. And it does, you don't have to watch it as fast as the other one. But the other one shows length of the Kona Ice Line, and they were definitely the most popular of all the vendors that day. Their line kept growing and growing.
Sandra, as I told you, I wasn't, I wasn't really a cold chair. I could put in a thimble the amount of time that I spent versus what you did. I did end up asking you a lot of questions that you always had the answer for, so. But thank you. Thanks again.
No, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you guys? So been my support in our report. One thing that is not on the report, probably most of you know by now, our K-9 vehicle that we had been utilizing, which was scheduled to be rotated out this budget year, was involved in an accident yesterday that I believe is going to show no fault on our part. You know, it was, it was definitely appeared to be the, the doings of the other driver. The Highway Patrol has investigated the accident, so, so, you know, obviously the insurance will make that determination. But our officer was okay. I believe the driver of the, of the other vehicle was okay, but the vehicle is not okay. So again, it was, it was scheduled to go out. It is vehicle, it is definitely retired. It had been reborn previously, and, and I don't think that that's going to happen again. So, so luckily, again, nobody was hurt in that, but, but it does put us down a, a vehicle. I, I think I mentioned in my previous report, maybe not, we have hired an officer to, to bring us up to the, to the tent officer position that we're currently budgeted for. It's a gentleman named Zachary Durham. He actually turned 21 yesterday, so he's taking his post-examination today. And assuming that is successful, then he'll be fully sworn tomorrow and, and fully commissioned tomorrow. So anxious to have him on. He seems like a, like a good, good fit, so we're happy to have that. Again, I know that Sandra has, has mentioned a lot of this, and, and I hate to, to reiterate too much, but, you know, we had Jurifet and, and of course, the eclipse event last weekend. And I think we've got a great group of officers right now, and I think they're doing a phenomenal job, and both of those events went, went really, really well. I think specifically Lieutenant Crump's back here tonight, which he's typically not, but he does a fantastic job for us, and, and he organizes a lot of that stuff. He's, he's way more organized than I am and definitely an asset to the city. So we appreciate him. Secondly, in years past, especially at Jurifet, the Friday night before, I was usually out till 1:00, 2:00 in the morning setting out the barricades, getting the roads closed downs, or roads closed down, I should say. I was in charge of getting the barricades or, or took it upon myself. And since Gary's come along, his staff is, has been phenomenal. They take care of all the barricades. They help set out the barricades. They actually helped on the day of the event with, with staffing there, moving the barricades, and, and, you know, they stood out with us and sweated just the same as we did. So they've been fantastic to work with, and I think he's doing a great job too, so.
Yeah, I want to also compliment on preparing for this, this, this road work. He stepped up and said, you know, "This really isn't your responsibility." He said, "No, I want to be involved in it. I want to be part of the process." So I think Gary's a great team player.
Anybody have any questions?
This is Zachary. He's the one that's been bringing around our package, right?
Yeah, he's, he's been doing ride-alongs with us for several, several months, even while he was in the academy.
I was talking to him, it seems like.
So we, we kind of hired him as a civilian at this point, but started his, his field training process, the, the bookwork that he had to get done anyways. And then again, once he's, once he's passed his post-certification, then, then he'll be fully commissioned and, and, you know, will actually be able to, to work as a police officer. Still kind of considered a paid ride along at this point, but he has started his training process, and, and I think it's going to be a really good fit. I think it's going to work out really well, the way the timing played out on that. So we're happy to have him on. He's, like I said, taken his test probably right now, or he would have been here tonight, but I will get him to, to the next meeting and introduce him to everybody, so.
Eric, we had talked to you one night about the K-9 officer and his experience with a past company we were talking to. He had had previous experience with that supplier of ours. Has anybody talked to him about this new supplier?
He, he is the one that brought that to us. The supplier that we had the issues with initially, he had done some tracking training in, in Rolla with him and was pleased with the facilities and, and got along well with the guy. But as Martin mentioned, my, my conversation with him in regards to Mark's concerns with the contract were, were not terribly professional, probably on either end, so.
The company that we're looking at now is actually the company that trained and certified Yadi, his first round of certification. So Officer Cuthbert is also familiar with the Yadi.
And, and again, the reason we were going with him was because of the location, you know, it would have been, you know, quick and easy turnaround for the officer to train. I mean, he'll be in training for six weeks there. So the, the spot that we're looking at now, I believe, is in Michigan or somewhere up north. So, I mean, he'll be gone for six weeks with that, and it's, you know, just.
Price does include lodging, so.
Right. But it doesn't.
It does?
It, it does include lodging.
They're not going to feed him unless he's dogged.
It doesn't count for his time away from the family, so. So, you know, he won't.
That's nutrition. Protein and protein.
There was a, there was a, like a hat day thing at school today for, is that, was for a K-9?
They are, they're, this is the second year they've done it. Both the schools on the, on the Valley-St. Gen game that they have have done a law enforcement appreciation dinner and, and ceremony at the game. Tomorrow night will be that, that ceremony. I believe that they are giving these proceeds to the Sheriff's Department for their K-9 program and also for the animal shelter that they pay for. I mean, obviously the tax pays for, but just to supplement some of those expenses. But again, I mean, we work in a great community and certainly feel appreciated, and, and, you know, that certainly goes a long way. So we appreciate all the support that we get from you guys and from the community. And again, the, the schools always step up, and we have a great relationship with both of them, so.
So what's our plan now? We no longer have a vehicle that's properly equipped to.
Well, we have a couple of options. One that we would like to propose would be maybe looking at the capital improvement fund. As, I mean, I think this would fall under a capital improvement item for a vehicle. We would certainly use it more than the two years, so I think it would fall under the umbrella. We'd be looking about $47,000 or so. It's about $19,000 worth of equipment that we'll put in specifically for the K-9 on top of the cost of the vehicle. So we're preparing those numbers, and, and most of those numbers are proprietary or state bid items anyway, so I, I think that will be good on all the bid process, but it's certainly something that, that this board would need to consider. And, and, you know, obviously, any, any support we can get from you guys would be appreciated. Also, the, later in the agenda, we do have the approval of the contract for the K-9 on here. Again, all parties seem to be in favor of that, so, you know, we appreciate your, your support on that.
So is there some insurance money we're going to recoup for it?
Theoretically, yes. I believe the adjuster's coming tomorrow, the, the other driver's insurance. And again, I, I don't have any reason to believe it's not going to be considered the fault of the other driver. So we hope to, to recoup some of that through, through the insurance. But again, with insurance, I, I don't know what that's going to look like. I know former Alderman Stupi is, is more involved in that than I certainly am with insurance, and, and he's offered to provide his counsel on that. So, so obviously, we'll take any, any help we can get to make sure we maximize that dollar.
Does our department do that, police report, or do you have?
We had the Highway Patrol investigate the, the accident.
Okay, so we were kind of out of the loop as far as our, our police department.
As far as the investigation. We'll, we'll be in contact with the adjuster tomorrow as far as the.
Right, I mean, as far as the police report, it came from.
The Highway Patrol, correct.
Right.
Correct.
It had to be, I mean, that's.
It's just cleaner.
Yeah.
So the $47,000 includes the $19,000 in special equipment?
Yes, yes. The vehicle itself is 28 and some change, and then the $19,000 in equipment, so.
Hope our insurance pays for that.
We're not going to get that much in insurance, I guarantee you that.
Was that car, was what year?
It was a 2010, I believe.
Yeah.
2010 or 2011.
So is the equipment transferable to one vehicle?
No, no.
So the shit.
But the equipment that.
It seems the insurance should give some, some value to the equipment loss.
Yes, that's what we're hoping for. Yeah, we, I mean, even some of the equipment we had, we had issues trying to, to get it to convert to the Crown Vic when we put it in initially. So it's, it's completely different configuration for, for the new vehicle model, body style.
So we're going to spend, say, relatively $49,000, somewhere around what you're looking at, okay? $13,000 for a dog, that's $62,000. What, you know, we, we sit here and we try to get a budget together, and I, boy, that's a lot of money.
It is. 14 of that has, has been reimbursed from the insurance. I mean, it's, it's money that we already have a check waiting to pay for the dog.
We've replacing the vehicle, so the figure is the special equipment and the dog. So it's, it's $32,000.
How much has this dog helped?
I believe Lieutenant Crump presented a presentation at the previous meeting as far as the.
We had a presentation for last May. It was pretty impressive, yeah.
I mean, he's helped with, with apprehensions, helped locate quite a bit of, quite a bit of narcotics, enabled us to get search warrants. We've made several felony arrests with it. And, and again, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a tool that, that can be very, very beneficial to the city, to the, to the, I mean, if, if we have a toddler walk off from their house, you know, the, the dog's going to be able to track the toddler. You know, I mean, they can go places that we can't go and, and smell things that we can't smell. I mean, I, I think that it's a, it's a valuable tool, and I hope that the, the rest of the board feels that way, the majority of the board.
You had mentioned we were going to be cycling this to be hit with a crew, so really, not to look at a total expense of $60,000. We've already got 14 for the dog. The car's going to be replaced in two years anyhow, so.
In, in a month.
We're just going to forward ahead, basically replace the vehicles.
Yeah, it's scheduled. Again, I haven't had my budget meeting in, but it's, it's one that would be scheduled to replace next month.
So it's not a $60,000.
Depending on what the insurance gives you, you might actually come out better.
Than we would have.
Possibly than if you just try to sell it at auction or whatever, which you're not going to get. You're not going to get much for a 2010.
No.
Patrol car.
No.
With every month.
I think it's around $80,000 then, $90,000.
It's been rebuilt once.
I'm sorry.
And it's been rebuilt.
Yes, yes.
It's a rebuild engine.
Yeah, insurance has paid some on it already.
We've got the 18s coming out here, so 10 years, 8,000 pounds a year, that's dang little, yeah.
A lot of hours on it.
Yeah.
A new mower, you said?
I thought you said we need a mower. I'll take them, we're going to get it up. No, we, it, it hit a deer probably a year ago, it was this last winter, and we replaced the fender and the hood and, and the front clip, for the majority of the front clip on it over the winter.
Okay, great.
So are we going to have the dog in no car?
With the timing of everything, and again, depending on what the board decides to do, it may shake out to where they'll, they'll come in about the same time. He'll, we'll get the, I mean, he'll need a vehicle to, to go up to training in Michigan, so, I mean, that's something that we will have to get, get figured out relatively quickly. There, there's a considerable lead time on ordering a car, 14 weeks, I think it was, on ordering a car, but the, the company that has the state bid does have some vehicles on their lot that, that would suffice and, and be equipped similarly to that, that we would order. So we would be able to get that relatively quickly, should the board decide to go that way. And then, again, the lead time on, on all the equipment that we need to outfit, you know, we could certainly expedite that and hope to get that in by the time he's, he's traveling.
So what's the next step?
Oh, well, it's on the agenda to order the dog.
No, I mean, the car.
The car. Tomorrow, you're getting it, the way I tell it, see what the insurance gets, I mean, go from there, so.
Gary's, what to do?
All right. Well, we can't order the car until you approve the budget.
All right. Okay.
Any other questions? Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Gary.
Hey, Eric. Any committee reports?
Yeah, I agree.
Public comments? Public?
Just sort of make a statement before we go on to the consent agenda. Whenever we're putting aside all the consent agenda, as they voted on for no discussion, when you're reviewing your packets, if you see something that you want to discuss, when they approve the agenda, the fourth item on, on our, on our agenda, that would be a good time to bring up if you want to take something off the consent agenda for discussion. But you could do that now if you wanted to. Just in the future, probably the best time to do it is before we approve the agenda. Thanks.
Yeah. For sure. Okay. Move through.
Have the consent agenda.
Have the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Some question. How do they approve the close session minutes without reviewing them or passing them out now?
Oh, yeah, it's a good question. Should have been done before we.
Yeah.
We didn't vote yet.
Yeah.
I have to think about it, so.
Yeah. So then this is all true then.
Pending your review here now, the thing would be that if you see anything in there that would make you reconsider your approval, you'll have to undo your approval and move on. Hearing none.
Thank you.
Okay, there's nothing under old business. Now, new business, we have a notice of a public hearing.
Just agree to the public hearing.
All right. Public hearing will be held at the St. Genevieve City Hall on Thursday, August 24th, 2017, at 6:00 PM. At this hearing, citizens may comment on the property tax rate proposed by, to be set by the City of St. Genevieve Political Subdivision. Tax rate shall be set to produce revenues, which the budget for the fiscal year of 2018 shall be required from the property tax.
And I agree, the old and the new rate for the categories.
On the general revenue, the old rate was 0.4740. The new one is 0.4812. Uh, sanitary, zero point, the old one is 0.0473. The new rate is 0.0480. The ban, new, uh, old rate, 0.0761. The new rate is 0.0773. Parking recreation, the old is 0.1232, and the new rate is 0.1251, so.
Now, some citizens who've seen this notice were a bit confused about it because it looks like you're increasing our taxes. But this is an adjustment that's mandated by the Hancock Amendment, which is designed to keep cities from being enriched by just the inflated value of your real estate assessment. So they look at the real estate assessment every year, and they adjust the rate, up or down, to reflect the growth or the reduction in the assessed valuation of the property within the city. We have no control over it. We get the report, we ask you to approve it.
No, the only way we could change this is by a poll of people.
Yes.
Yeah.
So our, our net revenue stays the same.
Right.
So this, this increase that's proposed is to, will, will keep the tax revenue for the city the same due to a.
Reduction.
Devaluation, as, as it were, in.
And, and if you got your tax bill, you know that your tax bill didn't, it didn't go down, but some properties were taken off the tax records, which is what caused the crime.
Such a citizen's luxury. Such a citizen's luxury.
No, it's a private.
So this, this increase that's proposed is to, will, will keep the tax revenue for the city the same due to a.
Reduction.
Devaluation, as, as it were, in.
And, and if you got your tax bill, you know that your tax bill didn't, didn't go down, but some properties were taken off the tax records, which is what caused the crime.
Such a citizen's legacy.
No, it's a private.
Who, who, uh, I know it's not your domain, but who oversees the county and their tax rates?
The auditor, the state auditor.
State man.
So what, what properties left the, the city that would not pay taxes to the city then? Is that what you're saying, that there were properties before that are no longer? How does that happen?
Uh, not per property ownership, buy a house, or two.
Yeah, it is happening.
Or three. Or bank billing.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's it, you now get to.
Questions?
Close, and you officially close the public hearing. If there are no more questions.
No further questions, the public hearing is closed. Okay. Six fifty. Take us on to bill number forty-one seventy-three, this is the first reading of this bill, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri to employ Jeremy Brower as a city prosecuting attorney. And he is here tonight, and I'd like to have, to do two readings. Come on, Jeremy. In your packet, you'll see his credentials. Yeah, they're attached to the contract and then his credentials.
Well, tell us about yourself, this is a job interview.
Well, the resume explains most of it. I practice, right now, basically criminal law. I know Mr. Bishop's a much more well-rounded attorney than I am, but that's, that's where, that's where my practice is, is criminal defense at this point. Currently, the city attorney for Caledonia, I've been doing that for quite some time also, so it's, it's interesting being here, watching how you guys do the meeting as opposed to how we do the meeting in Caledonia, which has a total of three hundred people in it, so it's a little bit different. But I'm proud of my resume, and I think I would come in and be able to do a great job, and I'm, I'm looking forward to the opportunity.
Anybody have any questions for?
Yeah, I mean, what was your role in it, being a assistant prosecuting attorney?
Did that for around ten years, it's, trials, preliminary hearings, grand, presenting a case to the grand jury, filing charges on people, deciding what to file, negotiating with attorneys, bench trials, jury trials, motions, hearings, it's, you get the opportunity as prosecutor to do a, a lot of different things, so.
Well, we're.
I like to think so.
Yeah. What we've had about.
We did that, too. Yeah, a lot of them.
And good hearing. He mumbled that.
I got a couple comments. Jeremy, I don't know you, and this has got nothing to do with you, but I still, I guess I'm going back to the fact of moving this out of town, and I, I am opposed to it. What happened to our, what happened to Carl Kinsky? I know that was temporary, but.
It was, it was temporary. County let us use him for two months, because he is, it's a conflict, he can't be our attorney.
Yeah, I'm surprised that we could do it all. Excuse me, I don't know, was he even being paid for that, or is it?
No.
Okay, is it, because he's not allowed to practice law outside of being a full-time elected prosecutor, so it was, it was not an ideal situation to have him do it, because he's supposed to be dedicated full-time to his, his elected position as the elected prosecutor. So I was nervous about that to begin with, but you'd already said you're in motion to get somebody else in there as, as your prosecutor, but that's, that's really not a viable option. And if you really continue to try to do that, it'd be over my strenuous objection. I think you put, you made the.
How many courts did he have?
He just got one.
No, he attended two.
Oh, I'm sorry, here, that's right, I think they're differently.
Well, again, I guess going back to the meeting that we had a couple months ago, when most of you all were here, and, and what we heard in that meeting, ninety, not ninety, probably eighty percent of what was talked about, we've got no control over, was talked about in that meeting. I did hear from a couple people that one of the reasons Mr. Kinsky did not want to do it anymore is that he didn't, he didn't like our court system and threw up his hands, he was somewhat frustrated with it.
Yeah, I don't think that's a good time to be talking about that here.
Okay, can we go into closed session, talk about this? I don't think we can, can we?
Well, I don't know, you have an agenda for closed session.
It doesn't matter if he liked it or not, he's not allowed to do it.
He's not allowed to do it.
He can't do it.
My point is, we sat here.
You've just got to be careful what we say here in the public on this issue, Dave. I'm just saying, I don't.
I, I get that, but I don't think this is an item that we, if this is a contract, I don't think we can talk about this. It's not a personnel issue, per se, if it's a contract, we can't talk about it in closed session. Then I don't know how else to talk about it.
Well, I mean, what is there to talk about, other than what's your displeasure here? Are your, is your displeasure that we, we're not hiring an attorney from in-town? Is it? Because that, my whole point is, we've hired this man, have looked at this man, looking at his credentials, he was a prosecuting attorney. One of the other issues is, I like to see, I know it's difficult when you have an attorney from, from out of town, but in a small town, everybody knows everybody, and I think it's a good thing to have somebody on the outside, and with technology, it's not going to be a problem, getting the paperwork, I, I just don't see it's where it's, where it's an issue.
I think it's, I think it needs to be a convenience to people, if they want to go and see the prosecuting attorney, they should be able to do it and not be inconvenient. Again, I, I think what we're looking, what maybe we were looking at in that meeting was here, we were looking at things that we didn't have control over, so we don't, emanate up eliminated prosecuting attorney, and now we got to go out of town to find one.
I choose to go out of town to find one, so.
And, and.
That's, that's the whole point.
As far as inconveniencing them, if they don't want to be inconvenienced, they shouldn't put themselves in a position they need to go talk to a prosecutor.
Oh, that's ridiculous, Jesus, anyway.
A lot of cities use outside prosecutors, a lot of them.
Yeah, the, the other side of this, there's a couple more things. I mean, I happen to know really well another municipal judge in this county, and that judge told me that there's been, at least the last two prosecutors that was in that court were there and done a, done a real good job, always came prepared, and they're, they're local attorneys. I, I just think the convenience, and then the other side of it, here we're probably affecting, not that it's a big deal, but there's at least a couple jobs that we're affecting at least a part of a couple jobs, one, an attorney, two, probably some administrative work. And I, again, between the conveni, I, I just think it's a shame that we've got to send it out of town.
I think it is, too. I, I think, yeah.
Well.
I think it's quite an inconvenience for people, quite, and you say it's none, and I'm just.
No, I didn't say, I didn't say it was none. Joe said it was none. I don't, I don't think it is.
And I think we've got qualified people in town that can do it.
I do, too. I think we do.
Well, duly note that, we're going to vote on it tonight, and it's, it's up to this board to decide what we're going to do here. I brought you somebody that's very qualified, and I'd like to see us go forward, so.
Your, your offices are located in Festus?
It's in Park Hills.
Park Hills?
Technically, it's Farming the Truss, but it's Park, it's Park Hills, and I came to the last court and, and observed it, and understand what the time is, and as far as, as far as like an inconvenience for people who may be charged, I'm going to be here early to avail myself and my time to them, they're not going to have to, to travel to me, so I'm going to be here and present myself, so it is not an inconvenience for them.
I mean, is that involved in our contract, that he's here so long ahead of time, to possibly meet with people that need to?
Well, that's just how we work the court, anyway. You come, there's a line of people here, they get here early, they visit with the prosecutor, strike deals and stuff like that.
Just on the day of court?
On the day of court, yes.
Is it, is it common for people to meet outside of that day of court?
No. No, you don't meet with criminal defendants in your office outside of court. I've never done it, I've never heard of a prosecutor, Mr. Elpers has done it, quite a service he was providing.
Well, I, I.
Because there's, there's a conflict there, and, and I'm a prosecutor in a couple cities, the, the people will, will not come to my office to visit with me about their case. If they were to show up, which has never happened, I would say, you're going to have to talk to me, you have to show up a half hour early, and, and we'll talk, if, if I can talk, but a lot of times, you can't talk to them because they're going to say something incriminating about themselves, so, so you have to be very careful how you communicate with people that's been in the prosecutor. And, and so I understand your concerns about it, ever, well, people, that's, that's a board's decision, but, but really, a prosecutor's not supposed to be having, you're supposed to be having literally conversation with people on the other side, because, especially if they're unrepresented, you want to take advantage of, you know, if there's only so much communication you can do, and that. I've had people call me up before and want to talk to me, and a lot of times, it's just not productive, anyway. And you don't want, generally, the cities don't want to pay me, my oversight's an hour early, it's a flat fee, it's a little better, but anyways, in this practice, but, but what I do is hourly, and, and my cities don't want to pay me to set office hours for a criminal defendant, so I just don't, so you just talk to them either before session or after session. I didn't say I would handle that. I, I would also say another thing, whoever you hire, I don't know Mr. Brower personally, but I know him by reputation, good reputation. In today's day and age, with, with how much oversight and all these changes in this so-called reform of municipal courts, you've got to have somebody in here that knows how to prosecute a case, and won't run foul of the Supreme Court rules. A lot of times, it reduces your legal problems in St. Louis County with some of these smaller municipalities where they have attorneys that don't understand how to prosecute cases, how to protect defendants' rights to you, and how to take advantage of people, and so you need to have somebody that has that experience, whether it's Mr. Brower or somebody else. The very important now, because it's become a subspecialty, that, that you know how to do that the right way.
The code provides for the mayor to make the recommendation and to get the advice and consent of the Court of Alderman. Is there any functional distinction between boards' consideration under an advice and consent requirement versus their authority to pass legislation?
Well, they, they consent has to be the majority, so they, they provide their, their advice, and they got to vote.
Yeah, but are they limited to consider his qualifications, and is there any limitation on their consideration?
No.
Okay.
It's, it's just like, unless they consent in the Senate, they, for good reasons or no reason at all.
Okay, all right.
Free discretion in what they can say.
Yeah, well.
So they can consider these things, and I, I just want to let you know, from my, the practical aspect, as far as the office hours are kind of tacked outside of offices, it just doesn't, doesn't occur, I don't know if Mr. Elpers was doing that, if he did, it would really surprise me if he was talking to people in his office. That, and the staff usually doesn't like the, the criminal defendants showing up in your office, you know, like, you know, like your secretaries, you know, you don't want to, you know, imagine, God, the defendants show up, complain about their tickets and stuff, so it's more for the staff.
Motion to approve bill forty-one seventy-three?
Go ahead, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. So I'd like to have a second reading of ordinance forty-one seventy-three.
Make a motion for a second reading?
Second.
Okay. Let me read it, an ordinance authorizing, directing the mayor of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri to employ Jeremy Brower as city prosecuting attorney?
You have to give, you have to give the okay for the second reading.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion for a second reading?
Second.
We had a motion.
We had a motion in the second.
We need to vote.
Just now vote.
For a second reading.
Just roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
All we need to roll call vote.
You need a second reading.
Okay. An ordinance authorizing, directing the mayor of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri to employ Jeremy Brower as city prosecuting attorney.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Now we need a roll call vote.
Alderman Resika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
No.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Grimmager?
No.
Six yes, two no. Bill number forty-one seventy-three now becomes ordinance forty-one oh six.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Jeremy.
All right, thank you.
Glad to have you aboard.
Thank you.
Bill number forty-one seventy-six, it's a first reading, an ordinance levying taxes for the year 2017.
It's levying taxes for seventeen, but it's, is it, did I do that wrong?
Because your first line, section one, says fiscal year 2018.
It's for fiscal year 2018, but it's for ta, the taxes that are presented for seventeen.
Oh, okay, I get you.
Does that make sense? Okay.
Yeah, because they'll sort about the tax rules.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So this is worded correctly?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Go ahead, Bob, you got it.
Do a second reading of Joker's case.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I need a second reading on this because it has to go to the court, it has to go to the county before September first.
Move for, for a second reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So an ordinance levying taxes for the year of 2017, be the second reading. Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Alderman Grimmager?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Resika?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's, bill number forty-one seventy-six now becomes ordinance forty-one oh seven.
We need two readings on this one, Martin. Bill number forty-one seventy-seven.
I've already arranged it, Steve.
Say what? Oh, you did it, all right. An ordinance for the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with Jokers Incorporated of St. Genevieve, Missouri to overlay a portion of Third Street and North Lynn in the amount not to exceed sixty-three point two zero per ton.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion for a second reading to expedite this, so we can get going on it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, this is bill number forty-one seventy-seven, an ordinance for the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with Jokers Incorporated of St. Genevieve, Missouri, to overlay a portion of Third Street and North Lynn Drive in the amount not to exceed sixty-three point two zero per ton. Roll call vote?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second. Now we need a roll call vote.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Grimmager?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Resika?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's, bill number forty-one seventy-seven now becomes ordinance forty-one oh eight.
Okay. Reading, first reading of bill number forty-one seventy-eight, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2017 budget relating to the sewer fund number zero three one.